Forward meeting. We'll start the night off with a prayer from Commissioner Shill, and I will give the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather here this evening for Planning Commission for Washington City, we're thankful for the opportunities we have to be here and participate. We're thankful for our leaders and for our staff in Washington City and for their diligence and preparedness. We pray that we can be professional in our discussions this night, that all will be positive, that we can keep our attitudes and countenance at a favorable condition. Pray that we can stay in tune with one another, and we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry it's taken a little bit longer to get started tonight. I am having technical difficulties with my iPad, but we'll move on. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Chairman, if I may real quickly, item 5A regards a property that's my next door neighbor. For that one, because I want to comment in the public comment section, I'll go sit in the gallery and any comments I have will not reflect the city or the city attorney position, they'll just reflect Thad the neighbor?
Okay. So for the approval of the, I'm looking for approval of the agenda for tonight.
Commissioner Tuppo, I move to approve the minutes from August 21st, 2024.
Oh, no, agenda.
This Commissioner Tuppo, and the agenda. I also move to approve the agenda.
Second. I'm the first, Commissioner Tuppo, a second for Commissioner Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
So I guess that takes care of the minutes, too. So now we'll have a declaration of absence and conflicts, and Attorney Segmiller already told us his, anyone else? Okay, so we will start with for a zone change request of approximately 5.3 acres located at 2140 East Washington Dam Road from the current RA5 and RA1 zoning to a proposed R115 zoning. The applicant is Jared Bates, and we'll turn it over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. The requested change is from the current zoning of RA5 and RA1 to a proposed R115 zoning designation. The R115 request is for the purpose of developing the land into a residential development. This particular location has a general plan land use designation of very low density. This very low density allows for lot sizes 15,000 square feet in size and larger. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is RA1 and RA half to the north, R130 to the east, PUD to the south, and R115 to the west. Staff has no concern with the proposed zone change as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-24-05 for the zone change request from the RA5 and RA1 to the proposed R115, and this will go on to the City Council based on the findings in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
The, the partial just to the west of that, didn't we just change that to the R115 just a couple of weeks ago?
It was more like
Months, sorry, weeks, months.
Year, it was close to a year.
Really?
Was it?
What was the one that we just did?
We just did the general plan on this.
On this piece?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I was wondering. So we'll have you come up and talk to us for a second.
No, I'm with Rosenberg on this one.
Right, we'll let, we'll let you, just a second. Any, do you guys have any other? Yeah, same one. So it is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has anything to say to this, because I'll open up the, the public comment on this particular agenda item right now. Okay, I will close the public hearing on this section. Did you want to come up and say something now?
I was just gonna say that piece to the west, the preliminary plot expired like 13, it expired like a month ago, so it was approved like 13, 14 months ago, so.
Would, would you state your name for the recording?
Tyler Hughes with Rosenberg Associates.
Okay, alright, thank you. So if you guys don't have any questions, I look for a recommendation.
Commissioner Anderson, I move to recommend approval of Z-24-05, a request to rezone approximately 5.03 acres located at 2140 East Washington Dam Road from the current RA5 and RA1 zoning to a proposed R115 zoning designations, the findings and recommendations of staff and Senate.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I'm the first from Commissioner Anderson, the second from Commissioner Mitchell. Role call voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shill? Commissioner Tuppo? Commissioner Anderson, I mean, Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm, I'm an aye as well, so this will pass and go on to City Council with our recommendation. So the next agenda item is 5A, a request for a conditional use permit for an in-home preschool facility located at 82 East 200 South. Applicant is Logan Crowther, Crowther? And we'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Preschool facilities in residential zones are required to obtain conditional use approval. This preschool will run from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Thursday with a Friday and/or Saturday family fun class. The applicant is planning to cater to smaller class sizes, being one to eight children, but would like the ability to grow the number of children up to a maximum of 16. When there are between nine and 16 children, a second caregiver is required to be on the premise at all times. The home will be required to be inspected by the Building Department and Fire Department and given approval from both of these departments for the proposed use. A drop-off and pickup plan will need to be in place to mitigate any traffic congestions or concerns. The preschool will be held in the home in the designated areas as shown in the attached exhibits. Backyard will be fenced off for outdoor recreation, and the childcare facility requirements for this fence is that it shall not have any openings five inches or larger in size. Staff has added condition number eight addressing the outdoor fence, and if this condition can be met, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve C-24-14, allowing for an in-home preschool facility at 82 East 200 South, and that's based on the findings and conditions in the report. And just quickly, I'll read condition eight, which states, "The outdoor play area identified in the backyard shall be fenced with materials safe for children with no opening larger than five inches. The fence shall be installed and verified by the Community Development Department prior to business license application." That concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So what's the occupancy, how many children are they going to allow?
They would like to go up to a maximum of 16. The plan's to start small, between one, one and eight, and if the opportunity, I would defer to the applicant on, on the ages.
What's the, this is Commissioner Tuppo, what's the square footage of the space where the kids are going to be?
Again, I would defer to the applicant on those specifics.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, I'm gonna open this up to the public hearing at this point, if anyone would like to come up and speak to this. Please state your name, so for the
My name is Mel Hartley. I'm the neighbor to the proposed preschool, just to the south. My biggest concern is traffic in that area. I know they have a, a plan for drop-off and pickup. That doesn't always work. That's a dangerous intersection. There was a little seven-year-old killed there in a traffic accident about a year ago, little less than a year. When I was on my way up here today, this evening, coming across 200 South, the car stopped about quarter into the intersection when he saw me. You're just gonna bust right through that stop sign, it's dangerous there. So, traffic is my biggest concern. Children playing, doesn't bother me. You know, I had kids in my home so many years ago, I think I forgot some of their names, but there was, I'm, I'm afraid that if you go around the corner from 200 South on 100 East, there's a, a space off that house that people can park. Now, there was a truck and trailer parked there, and I went and talked to the owner and he moved it, but the fact is, when I back out of my driveway and my neighbor down backs out, somebody's parked there, you can't see up the road. And I backed out very carefully one day and about got hit by a pickup that was concealed by truck and trailer parked there. And I'm also wondering if this is a variance in zoning to let a business start there? Because to the east of his place, across 100 East, there's semis, semi-travers, motor homes, you name it. Supposedly a moving business, and it's real I saw in the community. But traffic is my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, my name is Thad Segmiller, I'm the, I'm the older of the applicant's neighbors, you just saw Mel with his full head of hair, he's on one side of the applicant, and I'm the bald guy that lives on the other side. I want to be clear that my comments are for Thad the neighbor, not, not my role as city attorney, they don't represent the city, nothing I say should be construed as a representation on behalf of the city. I also want to say that the Crowthers are excellent neighbors, and I, I actually hope that they can find success with what they're trying to do, because I've watched as they've tried really hard to be good neighbors to me, right? I've even chuckled, you know, I've got quite a few kids that fit into that yard there next door, and they've got a dog that is very happy next door to my kids, because their dog gets to bark at a lot of little kids as they make a lot of noise, right? And the Crowthers are the type of people that are, I constantly hear them talking to their dog, trying to get it to calm down, they're always trying to be good neighbors, and so nothing that I say is because I am not a happy neighbor of the Crowthers. I want that to be very clear. As I started digging through this as a concerned neighbor, I just wanted to, I've never lived next to an in-home thing like this, I just wanted to understand it. And then as I read the staff report, I got a little confused. You'll notice on the staff report, the action requested is for an in-home preschool, preschool facility, and then it starts referencing standards about a caregiver, which are standards for a daycare. And then in the second paragraph of the background, it even mentions childcare facility requirements for fencing, and so I got a little confused, and so I started digging a little more, and in the packet, I've given you just a map, which Drew's already got that taken care of, but also some, some standards and some code. In the Washington City code, in that packet, item 9-8B-2 is the zoning regulations for the, for the residential zone that applies here, and in that it says there's conditional uses, and I've highlighted the two that I think apply, but I'm not sure which, which it is here. The first says childcare facilities, and under that, the zoning code lists two conditions, that the outdoor activities are confined to a fenced yard, and that all other provisions of state laws about childcare are complied with. It also lists lower a conditional use for a school, but in the conditional uses, the only, there's just one word, it just says school, there's no conditions or regulations there. And so if you go back to the staff report, even on the first page, it's called both an in-home preschool and a childcare. And then as you go, go through some more, there's, there's additional things that just raised a question for me as to which one is this, is this a preschool or is it a childcare? As you go through the conditions, condition number two says the preschool will be limited to operating hours, and then it talks about a Friday family fun class, and so I, I wasn't sure what that was, and if you go through the materials, the Friday family fun class, it's in the last three pages of the applicant materials, it says on the first one of August 24th, "Potluck with all classes if available to make it park on site of the house or park on street, or on the street of the lot across the street at a park or something." Anyway, so I, I'm hearing statements that sound like a school, not, not a childcare facility, but I'm still trying to figure out which one this is. Condition number seven talks about a drop-off pickup plan, and in its last sentence, it says, "The plan will need to be provided to city staff and the Community Development Department and approved before any daycare sessions begin." So again, I'm confused here which one we're talking about, because our, our zoning code has both separately identified. If you look at the map, another complication is this house has a, has a permitted accessory dwelling unit, you'll see 82 East there, and behind it is another rectangular shaped building, that's a permitted accessory, a detached accessory dwelling unit. In my packet, I gave you the code, the very first code I gave you references accessory dwelling units, and it says that two additional parking spaces should be required for that. I don't know why, but those, those were not provided with that, with that permit. And so one of the problems I have is, it's not a problem, it's a question for you, should a residential lot that's been permitted for a detached accessory dwelling unit with the additional parking burden of that, should we consider it for an at-home, whether it's a daycare or a school? Should it be considered, and if it is, what should we do about that as it comes? And so I just wanted to draw to your attention, this isn't the Crowthers' fault, the Crowthers didn't build this, this was the resident before them who, who I understand applied for a permit and was granted it, but was not required to do what our code says, which is provide two additional parking spaces. Going through our packet, the packet that I brought to you, you'll see two red lines there in front of the home, those are just lines that I measured on Google, on Google Earth, I tried to get them as close to 30 feet as possible, the one on the right starts on the east at the stop sign, that's where the stop sign is located, and then goes 30 feet. The purpose for that was the second code that I shared with you, which is state code, which says that you shouldn't park or stop within 30 feet of a stop sign. I don't, I'm not in love with that code, especially in residential areas, but at this location where, where 200 South sits several feet higher in elevation than 100 East, which creates a really difficult viewscape, you've got to actually be beyond the stop sign before you can see traffic coming from the north or the south, so that, so the elevations here really make that, that, the visibility before the, the stop sign pretty relevant, and so I have concerns about traffic, like Mel said, and, and I, I would like their drop-up and pick-up plan to, to acknowledge that that stop sign and the spaces by it need visibility so that, so that we don't have a traffic accident there. I already talked about the conditional uses code, that's the next one in my packet. The, the next thing I gave you in the packet are the definitions from the zoning code that establishes the zones for the, the definitions. The first definition's for a childcare facility, and it requires that all adopted building code and fire code requirements are complied with, so I think that would mean that they have to comply with the spacing for the accessory dwelling unit, it wasn't required initially, but if they're gonna apply for a childcare facility, I think they're gonna need to meet that parking code. But our definitions on the next page also define a home occupation, and a home occupation's defined as you can, you can do four children of childcare as well. In this staff report, number three of findings, "The proposed use will comply with the regulations and conditions specified in this title." If it's a childcare facility, our, our city code has regulations and conditions, but if it's a school, we don't have any, and so as a neighbor, I see it being called a school, I see the schedule sounding like a school, I see the classing and the events sounding like a school, but we as a city don't have any regulations or conditions that that would, that that finding would even reference, and so I don't, I don't know what that means, but if it's a school, I feel like we need to come up with what that would be or should be. I'm gonna refer back to the application materials, in there, there's a document from the city called the project flow card. On that one, it's called, it's titled "A Conditional Use Permit for an In-Home Daycare," again, which, which again is confusing, because the, the report tonight is for an in-home preschool. And then you'll see within those images, Drew might, there, there is one where they show their house and they show the drop-up pick-off zone as the, as the, right, one that shows the schedules for the school. Right there. So in that one, they identify there, again, the drop-up pick-up zone, but that, that I think is probably, well, that's parking that I think's relevant to the accessory dwelling unit as well. In the macro, this is one of our downtown neighborhoods that doesn't have curb, gutter, or sidewalk, and so the, the pedestrians and the, and everything that's not a vehicle, everything uses the blacktop here. And while I, I really like my neighbors, the Crowthers, I don't like this intersection because of the visibility problems it has. When I, when I moved here 16 years ago, you hear of speed bumps and speed humps, we had a speed culvert. There's an irrigation line that crosses from the north side of the road to the south, and when I moved in, it was a big, deep ditch that reminded everybody that the speed limit needed to be about 15 miles per hour there to, to survive it. Since then, we've come along, the roads have been improved, and that's gone, but 200 South is now a feeder road to the Walmart and the commercial, it's much, much busier, and that intersection, especially if you're looking east, it's, it's nearly impossible to know your north and south situation until you're, the bumper of your car is out near the traffic. If you're coming from the north-south, it's nearly impossible to know what's going on on 200 South until you're already turning, we get a lot of cars that turn very quickly and then brake because they realize, oh, this is a residential neighborhood, Thad's kids are on their bike, or, or oh, this is a residential neighborhood, you know, Thad's backing up into his driveway, or whatever it is, right? Also, if you're from the south driving north, it's, the visibility on the 200 South is almost impossible until you're right there, and so I'm not saying this should stop the Crowthers, but I'm saying that we need a lot better idea as to what the standard is, what it is they're applying for, and I would like to see much more definition as to the drop-off and pick-up zone, how, how we can handle that in light of the accessory dwelling unit and its, its parking, as well as just the traffic scenario that's presented there. I hope they succeed, I hope they can come up with a good idea, because they're the type of neighbors that I think would do it well, but I, I, these are my concerns as the next-door neighbor, and concerns with the city code, as far as I, I'm not sure I can decipher from the application material what it is they're asking for, daycare or school. It sounds and looks and feels to me like a school, and if it is, I think we as a city probably need to come up with some, some standards and regulations for an at-home school. Thank you for the time.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, please state your name.
I also appreciate the Crowthers, they're good neighbors, Mel Hartley. They're good neighbors and friends, but I was sitting there thinking while Thad was talking, they're gonna have a, a preschool or childcare, whatever it is, what about medical emergencies for those kids? Has any provision been made for that? I don't know, just a thought.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the, that would like to speak to this? For the public hearing portion? Okay, I will
Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Is the, is the applicant here? Would you like to come in? Answered, I'm sure we all have some questions. And answer some of this, maybe some of the stuff that, Mr. Seg Miller?
Yes, absolutely. Um, oh, for the record, I'm Logan Crowther. And I will answer in order of, uh, first the safety concerns. Uh, we do have onsite for saved equipment. Uh, and we do have all the emergency numbers, poison control, 911, fire, we have all of those posted within the preschool. Um, as for parking and traffic, we do intend to use the driveway for pickup and drop off. We have each parent's pickup and drop off time staggered by five minutes to prevent any traffic buildup. We're going to be quite strict with the parents on that as well. We do intend to have, uh, front yard surveillance cameras to keep track of, you know, whether they are obeying traffic rules, if they are driving safely in the area. Uh, if they're not driving safely, we find that grounds to terminate our contract with them and no longer allow their children to participate. That's keeping the area unsafe. That's keeping the children of the preschool one safe. So it is important for us that they do keep the road safe, especially with that corner. That is, that is a horrible corner currently. Um, as far as whether we are a childcare facility or a preschool, we are a preschool. I, perhaps I phrase some things poorly in the application, but, but we are a preschool. Were there any other questions, anything else?
Um, age, what, what, what were the ages? I think someone asked what the ages were.
The ages are three to five.
Three to five.
Three kindergarten.
Um, Commissioner Tupow, what's the square footage of the space where the kids would be?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I believe it was.
Was it?
Yes, it's, uh, 494 square foot.
And you're hoping for up to 16?
So that was, what we're doing is we're doing seven children at a time. We're hoping to have up to 16. If we decide to push that to eight, 16 total. So seven to eight in the morning, seven to eight in our afternoon classes.
So it's a staggered start?
Yes.
So you'd only need to apply for the, the eight, the eight actually? Because you would only, is, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to ask my attorney, but he's not here. Right, so I mean, so it's only eight total. I mean, there'll be 16, but only eight at, eight at a time.
Yes.
How many restrooms are in that area?
One.
Just one?
So this is she'll, when you have your event, and it sounds like you have it, I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly or whatever, it talked about some kind of event where you don't have it on Friday, but the parents got picnic and yes, where are we going to park?
So this event that we're planning, it's currently hypothetical. We would likely do it at a park or?
That sounds better.
Yeah. No, we wouldn't do that at our place. There just isn't enough parking for all of that.
This is Commissioner Anderson, so I have a question about parking. Um, I guess my first question, so, so the accessory dwelling unit in the back, is it, is it occupied?
Yes, it is.
And where do those people park?
They park, if we actually look at Thad's paper here, it, it's between these two lines here, kind of directly above that tree on the north side is where they currently park.
So they park to the side of the driveway, but off the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've made sure that they park, um, the 30 feet behind the stop sign. So it's clear.
So are they the, for example, the truck or they're, or would they be?
No, that, that truck, that picture was taken before we.
I'm just saying, would they be like in that spot or further closer?
Further back, yeah, they would be about where the mouse is right there. In front of that walkway, that concrete walkway to the house.
Vehicles do they have?
They have one.
They have one? And then where do you park?
We park in the garage.
Garage? And when people are using your driveway, you just stay in the garage? You don't have access outside when, when people are coming in and out of your driveway?
No, but if people are coming in and out to drop off their kids, we would be there for the teaching. There's no reason we would drive out of our driveway to leave.
So I guess my only, my, my, my question here is I'm, I'm looking at the state code that, that Mr. Seg Miller had showed us. And, and, and I went on Google Earth to measure here. So you have 90 feet from, from the stop sign in the crosswalk to your driveway, which if you take the, the required 30 feet from the, from the stop sign, that gives you 60 feet of parking space on the side of the road, which is approximately three parking spots. But if you already have one of those used by the ADU, and technically it should be two for the city, even though off, on-street parking doesn't really count for that, but still, you've got one to two parking spots for drop off, plus the front of your driveway. So maybe three. That's, that's the only concern is it's a little tight. I think it's better that you've only got, you know, you're only asking for eight at a time. That's a lot better than 16 at a time. Um, sure, any activities you'd want to, we'd want to stipulate that that doesn't happen here, but, but I think there's legitimate concerns there about you using on-street parking, which is already very limited because of the ADU. Um, those are my biggest concerns.
So is there a breaking point? Reduce the number of children in each session is?
Do you mean if we have too few?
I mean, if you had, you only have six instead of eight. That's my, that's my question. Is there a breaking point? Do you have to have eight to make it pencil for you?
No, we've, the calculations we've done, we can go down to five and break even. But we prefer to aim towards that seven.
I agree.
Yeah.
This, this Commissioner Mitchell, this is a thought I had. Is it possible that if, you know, we pass this through to require like some kind of a safety? I mean, you seem at the elementary standing at the crosswalk. You know, to require someone in a safety vest to, to monitor, pick up, drop off, to try to protect those kids so that they don't run around a car or? I mean, I, I see the, the pickup and the drop being a potential safety concern. Is there a way that we can mitigate that by having requirement of someone?
And I, I agree with you. And I, I look at the lot, I look at the house and I just make the traffic and to that area. It, it just seems a little congested to me.
If we were to increase the pickup and drop off periods for each parent, so we have it staggered by five minutes each. If we were to push that to seven minutes, do you feel that would reduce the congestion there? It, it, the, the intention is for them to drop their children off within their five minute window, pull out and leave, opening up the space for the next parent. So there would not be more than one parent dropping off at a time. Is our intention, that's our goal. I know that parents won't always follow that, but.
My, my question, this is Commissioner Tupow, is while one parent is dropping off, where are all the other parents going to wait to pull in and drop off?
Well, hopefully they'll time their arrival for their window. But if they arrive too early, I.
I mean, I can imagine probably two to three cars staggered behind waiting.
I'm, I'm honestly not sure what instruction to give the parents on that matter is. I don't want to increase traffic in the area by too much, but I don't know if one or two cars driving around the block would increase traffic by too much.
Yeah, I think what we don't want is to, I mean, if you get cars pulling up and then you're blocking off the neighbor and then you got neighbors that are trying to get out of the driveway and they can't because cars are waiting, trying to drop or pick up kids on the preschool.
And I, I don't think it'd be that big of a concern except for that 200 South is a very busy street. Um, my question, the ADU, you have it rendered out to someone, correct? Is that, is that what you said?
Yes.
Do they have access? Or do they have to go through this, through the school?
They don't go through the school, no.
Do they have, their, their exterior access is on 100 East? Or do they have to come down through the side of the house and in?
They go around the house and into their, they don't go through the house at all. And also where we have the fencing proposed, uh, that is on the other side of where their door is. So they would not be accessing the preschool play area either.
Okay.
This Commissioner, that's what he's trying to ask is the entrance to the unit here, is it on the west side or the east side?
It's actually on the north and south sides. They have two doors into the unit.
Oh, and so they'll just come down your walkway and around the east side of your house and down?
Yes.
Okay, I see. I see where that is. That's, that, that helps explain us. And I don't know who it is and I don't know the rules of, of daycare, of who can be there, if you have to have background checks for everyone that lives there. I'm assuming you do with the state and they would, they would probably have to pass that background check as well for you to get the.
We've asked a renter to get a background check before renting.
But I'm sure the, the state's going to want one. I, I don't know for sure. I'm just, that's a question.
The, the state has told us that they will, and we've alerted our resident.
This Commissioner Anderson, I mean, kind of along that same line now, whoever lives south of you may not like this. And I don't know, maybe that is that you said, are you south or north or where? The west, okay. Gotcha. My, my, my thinking is that, and I'm looking at, at this on Google Maps and it, it seems like it'd be better if the, if the ADU accessed it from, from the side there, from 100 East and, uh, and parked on that side off the road and was able to get in access so they didn't have traipses across your front yard or interfere with that. But again, then you got, you're on that side of the road. Preferably either way, but it would, it'd be better for the preschool situation.
Is that pretty steep terrain on that side?
It is pretty steep and parking there blocks too much visibility from 200 South for coming up to that, uh, that intersection. So we're just not going to have any parking on that side of the house.
So I'm not sure what, um, what the requirements are, but we don't have any standards for the city. But I'm sure that there's some requirements by the state to run a preschool. So, um, can you run down what those are? And have you applied for that license to run a preschool instead of a daycare?
We haven't yet applied for the license. We wanted to wait until we saw how this meeting went, see if it was even a viable option for us. The requirements are that, there's, there's a whole lot of them. Are you looking for any specific requirements such as? I'll, I'll, I'll have to find the PDF for that. But I know that it has to be approved by a fire marshal. It has to have, uh, no openings that a child could get their head sucked in. So four inches or greater. Um, it has to have a designated parking area for parents to pick up and drop off. It has to have, uh, at least three minutes between each parent for designated pickup times. We've gone with more of five minutes. There has to be, uh, no slides that are steeper than 37 degrees, 37 or 38. So we've removed a slide that was on a play structure. That was not within code. Uh, no trampoline, so we are sealing off a trampoline that is in our backyard from the preschool. Would, would you like me to continue with more or?
I, what, uh, what's our regulation on restrooms? Is one restroom sufficient?
Yes.
It just seems a little light.
By the state standards, if we are keeping the children for less than five hours, one restroom is sufficient.
So you'll have two guardians or whatever you call yourselves, right?
Teachers, yes.
Teachers and then possibly eight students, 10 people.
Yes.
A lot of action in that restroom.
Well, that's one of my concerns too. One bathroom.
My, my wife, who will be the primary teacher, has worked in childcare for eight years and has also been very diligent about scheduling bathroom breaks for children. And she assures me that that is plenty of bathroom space for that many children.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know about children and using the bathroom on demand, so.
Do you, oh, sorry. Is there only one bathroom in the whole?
No, no.
You, you, you guys would switch off and use the other bathroom?
Yes.
That's, I mean, so you're still only, there's still only possibly eight. I mean, we just took, he said 10, but we just took two off because you would probably more than likely go use your personal one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the, the adults, the, the bathroom's being fitted for children. It's going to have a booster seat on the toilet. It, it's, that is not the toilet we will be using.
Right, that's, that, it was just for the children in that one. That's, that makes sense, that's. You guys have any other questions for the applicant?
Sorry, so I just calculated in my head. So potentially five minutes, you got 40 minutes of cars coming and going at drop off, pick up. Forty or 45 minute, if he, yeah.
They'd do eight, eight at a time, well, at the max.
And if we go to the page with the pickup and drop off schedule, it clarifies how long.
So it's a half an hour drop off 11:05 to 11:35? That's, that's plenty of time to get seven cars in and out and kids moving. I mean, I like, I like this, the drop off schedule with, with the traffic. I mean, it helps a lot.
My biggest, this is Commissioner Anderson, my biggest concern is just that you've got this ADU without any parking. That's what complicates it. If it, if it wasn't for that, I think it'd be just fine.
Does the, what time does, oh, it ends at 4:30? The last class would end at 4:30. So the person in your ADU, do they work?
They do, they work a night shift. They usually leave around 1:30 in the afternoon and get back around midnight.
So it'd be there in the morning.
Is there any potential of creating additional parking in that front parking?
Yeah, in front of Thad's house.
Well, I was.
Well, he's a great neighbor. I'm sure he'd be fine with it.
Like the distance between your driveway and your sidewalk that goes out the?
Between the driveway and the sidewalk? Well, in that picture, you see the.
To the east of your parking lot, yeah. Or, yeah.
I suppose there could be, that would be quite the expense. But if that's what's necessary, then we definitely look into it.
I mean, what are we looking at, trying to add a one parking spot? Or two, like I just look at that space and it's in between the sidewalk and?
The, I, I would like to mention the driveway we have currently is three cars wide. We've fit three cars there comfortably already. So with three there, about 90 feet, so three in the front, that's six parking spots for cars in the front. The ADU takes up two, that leaves us four for the preschool because our cars will be in the garage.
So this is Commissioner Anderson, suggesting maybe? And, and? So this Commissioner Anderson, suggestion maybe, and, and again, I'm looking at pictures on Google, everything, I don't know how old these are, but in the pictures I'm looking at here, on the side of the house, you've got parking space there to the, to the right side of your driveway. And at least in the picture I'm looking at, there's a, there's a trailer and two vehicles on the side of the driveway, which, I'm not saying that's yours, but the point is, is there's room for it. Or is that on your yard? Okay, so again, you'll have to buy it from Thad, give it to his trailer. Never mind.
Okay, you can see my ruler up there, so just, I wanted to clarify with public work. So that area you see between the two green flags is roughly sixty-four feet. Um, it's twenty-five is the minimum, right? So we're far beyond that for, so with that said, I'm gonna now say, and even if we, we're gonna go from the property line, I'm gonna go all the way to the sidewalk, just to give you a very, there's almost forty-five feet that if we had that filled, that whole driveway, but you don't allow that wide of a driveway though, do we? But we could, in this case, we don't have curb and gutter, so. So the, the width, the width on a, the width on a, a parking stall is, you know, by definition in the city, a parking stall is nine by nineteen feet. So I'd take my forty-five divided by nine, it could have four and a half, so easily four, four stalls, you know, parking in that area. Wait, to what it is right now is the B and that fits again, three parking stalls.
So by adding that additional space, they then would meet what our current code is for an accessory dwelling by having the two added. Bring it up to, to code, our current code by adding that space?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because we're, we're actually going to be going down to one parking for an ADU, just to help with the new state stuff that's going out there. So the requirement will be, will be one.
So they?
After we have passed that, but right now, the, the current code is two. So, but if you had all those, and they're parking the garage, I'm just, you know, getting things cleared for you guys to see what, what is there, so, so you have all that information.
Yeah, pardon spot to the driveway, then he's, the ADU's got a place to park off the road. And since there's no curb, the, the regulation.
But he's already three, he's already three wide where his parking is.
Four wide.
But with the ADU and they're dropping it to one, he doesn't need four, he needs three.
As long as his ADU guy parks off the street and parks in his driveway.
No, we need three, right? He needs two and one for the ADU.
Is this a single car or a double car garage?
Double car garage.
A full sixteen foot garage door?
I, I haven't measured the garage door, but.
Because that's the only way, that's the only way I could give you double, you know, credit on the, the two car garage if it had a sixteen foot wide garage door, so.
I'm most certain it is, yeah.
So what's gonna be better to have?
How many parking stalls does he need?
Yeah, to have the individual parked in front of the house or have the individual in the ADU parking on the street? Are we trying to eliminate the ADU from parking on the street to make it more visible so that when parents are coming and going? I mean, the parents are gonna be pulling into the driveway, that's the plan, right? So.
Would they, would they pull in the driveway or would they just pull right up to where the sidewalk is, get out, have, have the teacher get him out, walk him to the class, close the door and they drive off?
That's kinda what I'm envisioning.
That's what I'm envisioning.
I think it's better if the ADU parks on the driveway and then people just pull up, drop their kids off and leave without the house.
Um, Thad had something to say.
I'm not trying to steal Logan's, this is Thad Seg Miller. I think as a next door neighbor, I would, I would not be excited about even a wider concrete driveway. But I like some of the ideas you're having, which is, I think if, if it can work, let's give the, the criteria that we think that this site needs, whether it's, no, I think he's got a problem with state code. State code says they've gotta drop off offside, off-road, but, um, and, and I like, sorry, they need to drop off off of the street, right? The drop off needs to occur off of the street. And at that corner, I don't like on-street drop off because there's not sidewalks and then you just get traffic turning in. And so I, I'm a little worried about on-street drop off at that location. But I, he's got a nice flower bed and some roses and, and I would rather some, what he's got than an, than even wider driveway. I also, maybe other things like the, the, the flow of traffic, let's dictate what that should be, how they should enter and how they should exit, things like that. Um, I think we should dictate that there shouldn't be any stacking around that intersection in any of the directions. Like if, if his parents are gonna wait, they need to wait somewhere that's not that intersection. And then maybe a, an entrance way and an exit way. Again, I, I started with saying, I hope he succeeds, but I have concerns. And so I, I just think that might be what we, we have to come up with a plan like that that, that you find that might work.
I think those are good points. So stage him over in the big, you know, by the vacant lot that's, you know, a diagonal and then, and then come up, front of the house, drop off and then exit. We could control flow, you know, they must be traveling east on 200.
Right in, right out, yeah.
Yeah.
Staging in that diag, in that empty lot is an option, that sounds amazing to me, but I, I don't wanna make permanent plans for that.
Maybe one thing you could do, this Commissioner Anderson, if, if the ADU person is gonna park off the street, it might be better to have them park closer to the intersection at the appropriate thirty feet away from the stop sign. You could even mark it out or whatever, so they know like, hey, this is where I park. That way they're closer to the intersection, that prevents parents from, from getting closer to that and then they are just gonna hit the, you know, right in, right out of the, near the driveway and, and go out and that way. Cause if, if, if the guy, if the people at the ADU, if they're parking closer to your driveway, then parents are gonna have to go kind of around them and back over by the sidewalk and.
If I might just on the empty lot. It, it is an empty lot today, but it's entitled, there's two separate parcels there. One's entitled for, for two residential units, that's the one that's straight across from my house, basically the same length and width as my house, has got a front lot and a back lot. And then next to that is a high den, of, high density may not be the right word, a medium to high density. How many units are you entitled for Dennis? How many units are you entitled for on your piece?
He's not, he's not.
You're not entitled yet.
It's R one six.
It's, it's R one six, there's been several applications or at least, I shouldn't say applications, the idea is there is that'll have a, of a, a multi-unit type project there someday too. And so if you're gonna plan for that, just know that it's, it's probably short-term planning.
And I need to touch on the, I don't wanna encourage having the ADU park in the street because our code doesn't allow for an ADU to be technically designated spot for them to park in, in the street parking. We can't stop people from parking in streets, but if they're gonna have an ADU, they're supposed to have that parking stall on their property. So I'm just, I'm not trying to put that out there because we're talking about moving them around and I technically don't wanna have on the record that all of a sudden the planning commission, not that you're doing intentionally, it would be unintentionally allowing this one and then it'd be parked on the street when it should not be a city code.
So I got a question for the applicant then, can the, can you fit three cars in your driveway? Can your ADU park on the property line and then you and your wife still park in the garage?
Yeah, we could have their two designated spots be within the parking garage, or the driveway, if that's what's needed.
Which is gonna be one, they need one parking spot in your driveway?
Just one, yeah, we can have them designated one parking spot.
Yeah, but they still can drop off on the road.
Well, if one of the three.
Right, but you can fit two in your garage?
Yeah.
Both your cars are in, you can, both your cars in your garage?
Yes, both cars are in the garage. They can, there's a spot where the ADU can park in our driveway, that does not block either cars pulling out of the garage.
And that still leaves two spots for parents to come and go.
Drop off, yeah. It, it's, it's not the best, but it's, it's not the best situation either with that ADU. I don't know, I, that street's so wide, I feel like it's built-in parking right there.
Are we making recommendations to, to council or is this it?
No, this is us.
This is us, right?
That's, that's a wide road.
Well, does this have to stay?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, if you take that out and put it back in, so then you're not in the road. It's part of the road, but you're not in the road, right?
So that road's designed to be eighty-two feet wide?
It's going to be a narrower road, right? So homeowners are actually going to get more frontage.
Yes, they can, in fact, y'all point this out to you right over, let me get this guy off.
Changed that a, a year or so ago.
If you'll see this thin piece right here, this was dedicated back, has not been done across the street on that side. And I don't think anybody on this side's done it yet, so all this whole street. It will be about eleven and three quarters to twelve feet that will, could go back to all of them. Now, we just don't go give it, I mean, if they want it, they can ask for it. Usually we have the property owners pay for the surveying and the recording of all that, that's what their investment, but they get that land and the city just gives it back.
So in front of this, in front of this house, they could?
Well, it would go out to what you see this way, is that a fence, a picket fence?
Yes.
So it would technically almost go out to that, that current fence anyway.
Oh, so he's already, he's already grabbed it? The previous owner?
Technically, yeah, the property.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that's roughly what we'd give, give back anyway, what they've already, but it would be theirs and not the city property.
I was thinking it was the other way.
I, there's just a lot happening, the ADU and, and the childcare or, or, what do you wanna call it, pre, preschool, I just think there's a lot going on. I think you gotta give and take. You want an ADU or do you want a preschool? I don't know, can you say that? I did.
You can say whatever you want, Commissioner, but, oh, you, yeah, I think your point's taken.
Commissioner Mitchell, I do feel the same, as much as I'd love to see it be successful for this gentleman, it just feels like we're trying to cram a lot into a corner and potentially there could be some safety concerns.
This Commissioner Anderson, I, I think the, the preschool is a great idea and I think it's fine. I, I do think, I mean, Thad, right, that we should, we should come up with some standards for a preschool. I mean, it could even be the same standard as the daycare or whatever, but it, it should be something in there. But with that said, I, I think the preschool is, is fine. I just have heartburn over preschool and an ADU when there's not parking for both, you know, I mean. So I guess maybe it's the same thing, you know, which would you rather have, the preschool or the ADU? That's my only concern.
My only concern is the drop off and the pickup with it, which is impeded by it, yeah, and it's, and if we, if, if you could do it on the street where, because it's, everybody's kinda parking on the street anyway, I know the state's probably not gonna allow that, but if they even pulled in and backed out, I mean, if their cars were parked in the garage and they're just pulling in, dropping off, backing out and leaving and someone was there to get the kids so that they weren't there very long and there was nothing in, in the driveway, I don't see it being a problem. That's because you have two open spots to pull in, drop off and go. So, I mean, that could be part of the condition that there's, two spots will be open, come drop off and pick up in the driveway, because they have to pull into the driveway. I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a way to help make it work.
And that's what our current plan is, parents pull in, walk their children past the gate, and we walk them into the preschool. Parents would not be dropping off on the street.
Commissioner Tuppo, I, I'm with Mitchell and Sheil, that there's a lot going on, it's not the greatest location, there's potential hazards and it just doesn't add to the, the community, it's, it's too disruptive. As a preschool.
Commissioner Anderson, have you thought about using the ADU for the preschool? It might be a better location for the preschool, has more room.
With the rent that we have coming from the ADU, we couldn't afford to not have that currently. With the ADU, we, we previously didn't know that the parking in front was an issue. We haven't had any complaints about visibility, we haven't had any complaints about traffic, we haven't had any complaints about cars pulling out or any of those issues. When we pull out, back out of that driveway, we have clear visibility, so I don't feel parents backing out after dropping children off really would be much of a concern. The three-car wide driveway currently is plenty if we allow our ADU to park there, which that's gonna be their designated spot, that still allows for two spots for the, uh, for the preschool. Conceivably, nobody would be parking on the street, blocking any visibility, even though there's space for three cars there. I, I don't understand, I don't see how this is much of a traffic or parking concern at all. There's space for six cars, plans are only using up three car spots.
Commissioner Mitchell, again, I keep reflecting back like I live in a, in a newer subdivision that has curb and gutter and there was a preschool on a road that I traveled frequently and cars piled up. Like I still, I just visualize, I know how schools work, like you can try to require, you come at this time, you come at this time, it's just too much flexibility. I feel like potentially the cars are gonna pile somewhere and it's gonna be an inconvenience for one of those neighbors at certain times of the day. If, if there was a way to open that up, and I, I'm kinda leaning towards, yeah, you've got the ADU, you've got a preschool, you got a resident, limit it down to, to one or the other, you know, potentially to open it up more.
Commissioner Mitchell, may I ask, do you know how many students that preschool was having at that time?
I'm gonna guess similar to you, I mean, maybe less, and they did do an afternoon and a morning, they don't do it anymore.
We, we're aiming to have a much lower student count than most preschools. Most preschools have ten to fifteen students, sometimes more. We're intentionally lowering our class size to increase, you know, quality of care, but also to alleviate traffic concerns. I, I would be surprised if they had as many students as us. I, I would be surprised if they had as many students as us. I imagine they had more because that's what most preschools are aiming for.
Yeah, you make a good point, because I know not too far from you is a preschool with a number of children.
Much higher.
And I, I'm not sure, you know, how that's monitored and what they're actually doing and how it looks, pick up and drop off. My kids all went to that preschool.
Is that a residence as well?
It's a residence, yes.
Mr. Anderson, my, my kids went to the preschool you were talking about, and, I mean, they had, I think, eight kids, but they didn't. I never really saw any, any parking issue with it. I mean, people pulling aside the road and then they drive away, but... I don't know. I mean, maybe if, if he's got three parking spots in the driveway and, and the, and the ADU stays in one of them, it's probably okay. I mean, maybe conditional on, I mean, he's obviously got concerned neighbors, maybe they can keep an eye on it and if it, you know, and see if it works or not.
And again, if-
Put a time limit on it.
If this alleviates anything, we could space out our pick-up and drop-off times to seven, eight minutes.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't think that the duration is almost like just get them in and get them out. By dragging it out, you're just going to have more pileup, you know?
Yeah, the faster you can get them in and get them out, it's going to be better. I mean, I know when my kids went to one that we dropped off, I got there early every time so I could be first in line and was not doing what I was supposed to be doing. I didn't see the problem in it, but I do now. I don't think there's that many. Well, that has a designated spot in the driveway, because he probably can keep parking where he is because you can't stop him from parking there. So, you know, we can't say that that's a designated spot. We have to recognize that one of those is the designated spot. We're going to have to say that they need to keep theirs parked in the garage during the times of drop-off and pickup so that there is plenty of room for the cars to pull in, drop off, back out and leave. If there's two spots available and one's coming every sev, five minutes, I would guess that there's enough, they're not going to have to, and they got a wider area to park, so they don't have to be so careful back pulling in.
I'd still say, even though you can't dictate where the ADU guy parks, I'd still say at least, you know, ask him to either park in the driveway or further out towards the stop line, just so he's not right in the middle of your traffic flow.
Right, no, I'd make him, I'd make his, his parking stall as far west-
Yeah, either as far away as possible or in the driveway, just not right in the middle.
Because they're going to come in that little gate, it looks like, so that he's going to want the ADU all the way to the west, right? That'd be his designated spot, and then, because he has to have one, and then to go there. And then they'd go in, but we know he's still going to park out there on the street.
Is this location close to the huge daycare we approved along Main?
About three blocks. I can't make the motion.
It's a tough one.
We've done them before.
Like, like a one-year?
Yeah. We've done that before. Thanks, you can sit down, thanks. You can have a seat, thanks, sorry.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll take a stab at this. I'll make a motion to approve C-24-14, request for a conditional use permit for an in-home preschool facility located at eighty-two East, two hundred South. Findings and conditions of staff, but also, also I'll, I don't know how we, how do we add a condition for that? He's already got a spot there, I guess. With the recommendation that he-
Create a designated spot.
Designate, well, I don't know if you can do that. Just, he recommended designated spot for his ADU out of the, out of the traffic flow.
I would say that we have to have the cars in the garage.
Yeah, his personal cars have to remain in the garage during business hours. And we can, we give it a one-year time period in which time the neighbors can give feedback if it's working or not as far as the traffic flow. That works?
I'm okay with that.
Mainly looking for, I mean, comments from, from the neighbors there. I mean, if it's, if it's not working, I'm assuming they'll, they will let the city know, and if there are no comments in that time, everyone's fine with it, then, then we can, you know, look.
Just reapply?
Apply in a year, and we'll see if we've had any negative feedback or not. They reapply in a year and we see what the feedback has been from the-
Can we go a year from when? When's he going to have his, how long's it going to take to get your license? Sorry, please come back for, up here.
We usually have them bring that license to us because we have to have it on record.
Before you'll issue the conditional?
So we'll say when he brings that license in, then we'll, we'll put a date on it, because you're probably going to start as soon as you get your state license.
Oh, actually, we were hoping to start this last August, aligning with the regular school program, so. We missed that window, but my wife and I were still discussing when we're going to aim to open our doors, whether it's this January or if we need to wait till next August again. We can't afford to run it without filling the class two up to five, but filling it mid-school season is very difficult. So, we're, we're still discussing when this will actually begin.
Can we just base it on when he comes?
When he pulls his conditional?
Like he just times it that when he's ready to start, he comes and submits it, and when he submits it?
Yeah, we'll do that, because you do, again, apply for your li, your state license. That, whether you're going to have students or not, you can apply for that and hold on to it. Doesn't mean you have to, you know, you can apply, but you can't get that without our conditional use permit approval either. They, which has always been where it's the chicken and egg thing, which one should come first or second, but... So we've always been the one that just says we'd rather see the state license approved, then we'll, we'll entertain it, but they, so we always cave in and be the bigger people. Sorry if anybody hears from the state that mean to offend you, maybe I did. But that's what we usually do, is we'll let this go and then they have to bring in, when they get their license approved by the state, they bring us a copy of that. But then you can tell us then what your plan is on start, then we'll kind of set a date for that. If that works for you guys, we'll just make note of that. It's on the, it's in the minutes right now, so we'll, we'll go if they're, if that's the direction you're going, so.
So our one-year begins when we hand state license to you?
No, your one-year begins when you start. If you're going to be in January, if you're going to be in August, you let us know when you bring that in.
Good.
Because that's, your clock's going to start, but don't tell us you're going to go then and start.
Yeah, yeah.
You won't do that, right?
I won't do that.
So I'm just saying, just let us know when that is and then we'll just make note of that.
Okay.
And have the one-year after that.
Thank you.
Just, that, that's assuming that this passes. We, we don't have a second answer.
So that was a long motion, right?
Did you get all that, Bonnie?
Yes, yes, I did.
Well, I mean, it, we've already got the drop-off. I guess we had drop-off pick, yeah, so we do want to have some conditions that it's, you know, it's right in, right out, the, 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 the traffic flow is not blocked by, you know, the ADU, um, person parking, the residents parking.
So there'll be a, when they, when they, they'll have a map showing that they need to come in from the east, pull in, drop off, back out?
Right in, right out, that it's not blocked by their vehicles or the ADU vehicles. Or your trailer.
Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I like the one-year, so I'll, I'll second.
I have a first by Anderson and a second by Mitchell. Roll call voting. Anderson?
Aye.
Shiel?
Sorry, I'm an A. I think it's just a lot of accounting work, and I'm not an accountant. I just think it's conglorated. I'm, I'm an A.
Commissioner Tuppo?
I think with the one-year, um, I'm okay with it, so I changed from an A to an I.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
And I am Bullock, I'm an I as well, so this passes. Next on the agenda, 5B. That doesn't tell me much. For, this is a public hearing for a conditional. And this is conditional, man, a conditional use permit for a WinCo grocery store located on the southwest corner of Buena Vista Boulevard and Main Street. The applicant, Scott, I'm going to screw that up, Skolfer. And we'll turn this over to Stafford.
Thank you, Commissioners. This site layout shows four out parcels, which are na, are not a part of this approval. The out parcels are shown to illustrate the larger picture of the site. These out parcels will be required to obtain conditional use permit approval when they are ready to move forward. The total acreage of this site is approximately thirteen point two-two acres. The WinCo building will be eighty-four thousand square feet and include four hundred and forty-four parking stalls. Parking is adequate for the WinCo building. As shown on the plan, each out parcel will provide its own parking for the proposed future uses. The WinCo building will be thirty-two feet tall, constructed of concrete tilt-up panels that are finished tan in color. The exterior finishes of the building, along with the landscaping, is aesthetically pleasing. The zoning designation at this location is C2. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, C2 to the east, open space to the south, and C3 and R3 to the west. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C-24-11, allowing for the WinCo development located at the southwest corner of Buena Vista Boulevard and Main Street, as shown in the exhibits, with the findings and conditions as outlined below. And this will go on to city council for final approval. That concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions you may have at this time.
What's our timing on this, do we know?
For build-out, I would defer to the applicant on that.
I'm aware of several timeframes. The applicant is telling us that they want to go as soon as, they want to get started, right? There's a couple of timeframes that are kind of baked into that. The first one is the, the, the occupancy of the parcel for the interchange work. Interchange has used that a little bit, and I know that the applicant was, I mean, they want to get on to it, but they also want that work to be done, too, and so there'll be a little bit of timeframe interplay there. There, there is also a timeframe, the, the real estate closing is contingent on tonight's result. And so there's still, you know, the, the, the land hasn't tran, changed hands between owners at this point. That's a fairly simple transaction to accomplish, and so it's not, it's not like, you know, you got to finish an interchange. That one's pretty simple, but that's a timeframe that's in there. But with all of those in mind, the applicant's talking to economic development and other city leaders and telling us that they want to get started as soon as, as soon as they can.
Do you guys have any other questions for Eldon, or should I open this up to public comment? Excellent. Okay, we will open this up for public comment. We did receive some online that we have all read and that have been turned in and that will be turned in for record on this, so if you do have anything about this project, now's your time. Please get up and, and try to keep your comments as quickly as possible if you can. Three minutes is what we like to see. Um, do what you can. So if there's anyone here in the audience who wants to speak to this WinCo, please. Cool, all right. And please state your name, please state your name for the record.
Beth Ann McDonald. It's more of a question, do we know what's going to go in those other parcels?
No, not yet.
Well, depending on what's going in those parcels, might depend on how we feel as people that own houses right there. You see that? See what I'm saying here?
Yeah, but those will, those will come for, those will come before us the same way. So those aren't being approved right now, so if you don't like what comes in, then you can come to the same meeting about those. Either way, either way, this is zoned for this type of-
What would you like, what would you like to see go in there?
I don't know. I own the two houses on Main Street that you left, that was left for the freeway, and I'm just trying to concerned what's going in to make even more traffic on Main Street. Are they only going to be able to go in off, the way it looks, their only way they're going to be in, to go in is off-
Buena Vista Boulevard, correct.
But then again, it's this, on the other one, how much traffic you've got going into those, excuse me, what would it be, five businesses? And there's only two outlets to get out of there. Is that the way I'm looking at the map or not?
Correct, you have a right in and a right out. You have a right in and a right out, and then there'll be, there'll be a light right there.
Off on the wall here, four hundred spots, and you've only got two spots to get out, plus you've got whatever this business has, this business, this business, and this bit, business, and there's only two ways out of there? That doesn't sound too smart. It doesn't sound too smart. It wasn't any smarter then, and it's no smarter now, so we should learn from our mistakes. Just a thought.
Thank you.
First-time speaker at the pulpit in front of a planning commission. I've been in your place before. Not a, not an easy decision to make, but I do want to come up and, and speak highly in favor of this. I know a lot of the people, a lot of the individuals in the surrounding neighborhoods, in the Brio area, in the townhomes, used to live up on, just two blocks away from this. They're all super excited about it. Yes, it is going to bring a little more traffic, but they are super excited about this opportunity and having a grocery store even closer than what Albertson's is, because we don't know what's going to happen with Albertson's in the near future, so. I love the idea. I love, love everything about it. Again, talked with a lot of people about this one over the past couple of weeks, and they're all, the ones I've talked to are excited about this, this project, so. Hopefully it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, being citizen, uh, resident of Washington City, um, I think it's a great location, great product. I think a lot of people are excited about it coming here, and I'm supporting it.
Thank you. If there's no one else, I will close the public hearing. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Come on.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Brandon Johnson, JSA Civil, civil engineer for the project. I figured if nothing else, I'd come up and answer the questions about the traffic that we heard from the public. There was a very extensive traffic study written for this project. City staff has reviewed it and approved it. There are only two driveways. The photo's not up right now, the plan's not up. The western driveways are right in, right out, and then the eastern driveway at Brio Parkway is a full access with a signal interchange, or a signal intersection directly adjacent to the interchange. So we're, we're confident in the ability for this to work. Also, as commercial developers, we'd always take more access points if you'd let us have them. But we're, we're happy with the two if we can get them. And happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
I mean, that answered the question of the start time, basically, I think, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that we're, we're excited for this project. We've worked on it for quite a while and excited to get going. We still have to pull a full building permit and other things, assuming this goes favorably first tonight, but I'm excited to get started.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. The traffic study's not gonna allow a third intersection there because of the distance between the two.
I'm not saying a third intersection, I'm saying a third outlet. I mean, stop and think, you guys.
No.
Look at Smiths. You have the exact same mess. And how hard is it to get in and out of Smiths, and they have three?
I understand.
Yeah, so that, is there a way that we can go up and go and make another outlet out there to just make it flow easier? I mean, just because, I mean, I don't live in that area now, but I know what a nightmare it is at Smiths. And there's three outlets on that one.
Yeah, I, I understand, but the, the.
I didn't just stop and look at Walmart. They all go back and go, go across and go Home Depot and out that way to get out of there. When, yeah, it's set up to only have two, but they still make a traffic mess to go back out and go out to go on.
I, I, I don't, I don't agree, I don't agree with that because I'm there all the time, and I'm in the Home Depot. I'm in the Home Depot parking lot, and I go to Walmart so I can hit the light. I believe the light will be used the most for all of this. And that's the problem with some of them.
So where's the light gonna be?
Right there. There's a, there's a signal light that's going to go in right there, coming out of this, so they've eliminated a lot of that problems for everything, in my opinion. And that's what the engineers, the, the traffic study decide.
Smiths doesn't have a light.
It does, but you have to go down to the south, the south side.
Go down to the south end, and now it's blocked, and it blocks two entrances.
And there's a lot more houses back there, too.
That one has four, technically.
There's a lot more houses back there, too, that cause that to back up, where this is, Joyce is gonna be them coming out of here. This is, this will be a better design, in my opinion, so.
I hope so, because I, I'm in favor of the store. I just.
And the other entrance.
I'm just looking at it, I think.
The other entrance is right in, right out, meaning they're not gonna cut across traffic either.
Yeah, so they can't turn left out of there.
Yeah, there's a median.
They can't turn left right there?
No, they only have to go right, right there.
So basically, technically, anything going right, anybody going right, oh, sorry, is only gonna be able to get out once.
Anyone going left, anyone wanting to go left
Has to go to the stop.
Has to go to the light, so they don't cross traffic.
So that's what I'm saying is.
They respond to a lot of traffic accidents.
That only makes everybody that wants to go right has only one outlet.
You use the Home, the Home Depot, Albertson's complex as an example. Those are older complexes that have a lot of driveways, and the traffic engineers today would want to eliminate a lot of those. The city responds to a lot of vehicle accidents as people try to use those, and as, especially as it gets congested. When it's milk at the time that I buy it, when you're shopping for milk at ten o'clock at night, you, you can kind of use the one you want, but when it's busy, multiple accesses of left and right turns become really problematic. And so this one benefits from modern, modern traffic planning and traffic engineering. We, we hope that it'll function better than, than our older commercial complexes.
Well, Smiths isn't as old as.
Yeah, but Smiths is in St. George, and they don't do as good a job as we do.
Huh?
Smiths is in St. George, and they don't do as good a job as we do.
That, but WinCo's twenty-four hours, so if you want to avoid the traffic, you can go at ten at night or midnight and shop there.
All right, well, I'll close the public hearing again. I'll look for a motion.
This is Shill. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of C-24-11, allowing for the WinCo development located at the southwest corner of Buena Vista Boulevard and Main Street with the four findings, the eleven conditions, and they're using my race number of four, four, four parking, so I like.
Commissioner, please.
Give us a second. I have a first from Shill and a second from Tupou. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Shill.
Aye.
Tupou. Mitchell.
Aye.
I'm Bullock, I'm an I as well, so this passes, and we'll go to City Council in two weeks.
And, and we.
Oh, one week.
We did have a hundred and fifty-five emails of, in favor.
That's probably the most I've seen on anything. Lot of positives. This can be great.
The council sees this a week from today.
Awesome.
Six o'clock.
So I'll, I will look for an adjournment.
Commissioner Anderson, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
All, all in favor? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break before we start the land use authority. The Washington City Land Use Authority meeting for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I will look for the approval of the agenda.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, committee board. I move that we approve the agenda. Nice meeting.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the approval of the minutes from the twenty-first. I wasn't here.
Commissioner Tupou, I need to approve the minutes from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Commissioner, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts? There is none, I don't think.
I have none.
Okay, so item number four is for a preliminary plat approval for Lavender Canyon at Long Valley Subdivision, located approximately Lavender Canyon Lay and Lot Springs Drive. The applicant is D.R. Horton, and the engineer is American Land Consulting. We will turn the time over to Eldon.
Can we make this last an hour?
I will try my best to not make that happen. I would like to apologize for the conditional use permit. Copy and paste got involved. This plan is indeed for a preliminary plat, not a final plat. Just want to make that clear. The wording is correct on this one. This particular subdivision is proposing a hundred and forty-six townhome units on an area covering twenty-six point one-eight acres. The zoning designation at this location is PCD. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, south, and west. Each townhome will include a two-car garage with a driveway that is eighteen feet wide by twenty feet long. There are forty-two designated visitor parking stalls throughout the development. Parking is adequate for the development. The residents in this subdivision will have access to the larger community amenities. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, the request meets the subdivision requirements, and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the land use authority approve the pre-plat for the Lavender Canyon at Long Valley Subdivision. And that's based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anybody have any?
I don't.
This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public if there's anyone that wants to speak to it. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Can I, can I ask a question? Don, can I just, just throwing this at you. Come on up here for a second. You see, I zoomed in on these guys. Would it be possible for you to include this backyard area as private ownership? Would that be an issue for you?
It would be an issue to us because the exterior is owned by the, or, or, actually owned, I guess, by the HOA, and they have to have access to it so that they can repair the exterior, do whatever.
Oh, you mean the walls of the units are?
That's why it's the walls, yes.
Okay.
So they own the interior, the HOA takes care of the exterior of the building.
So the owners own everything from the inside of their wall, between the inside of their walls? It's almost like condo-type stuff, brags, because that's in a condo, the condominium.